I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of August ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room, and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available online or at the Planning Department, Room two thirteen. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking lot across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are needed. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and staff, cell phones may not be used in the chamber during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So move, Campbell.
Second, Edens.
Uh, Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Abstain.
Minutes approved.
Uh, the next item of business on our agenda is the election of Chair and Vice Chair for the upcoming two-year terms. Is there a nomination for Chair?
Uh, I would move that Cindy Raymond Yost be elected as Chair of the Planning Commission.
Okay, are there any, are there, I'm sorry.
You're okay, go ahead.
I was gonna say, are there any other nominations?
Second, Edens.
Okay, and your second is for Dick's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Seeing none, I would move that we elect Cindy by acclamation.
Okay.
Second, Edens, if you need it.
That's actually what we do need the second on.
Second, Edens, I just got excited again.
I know. Shelley?
Cindy Raymond Yost has now been elected to serve as Chairperson of the Planning Commission for a two-year term.
No, she has been nominated, we need to elect her still.
Okay.
She's excited, too.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Now Cindy Raymond Yost has been elected to serve as Chairperson of the Planning Commission for a two-year term.
Excellent, I will turn the meeting over to Chairperson Raymond Yost.
Right, um, first I would like to, um, just moment of personal privilege and thank Commissioner Edgerton for her incredible leadership over the past couple of years, you have done amazing.
Appreciate it, thanks.
And moving on with the agenda, is there a nomination for Vice Chair?
Uh, I would like move that we nominate Christie Joy as Vice Chair.
Okay, are there any other, oh, sorry, I gotta stop talking.
It might be a habit, but it'd be hard to break people, sorry.
She got excited, too.
Yeah, I'm just jumping right in. Are there any other nominations? All right.
I would move that we close nominations and elect Christie Joy as our Vice Chair for the next two years.
Second, Edens.
Okay. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Approved, eight to zero.
Madam Chair, could I have a point of privilege also? I also wanna say, thank Tracy Edgerton for her leadership the last two years, um, uh, it's been exceptional, and we've gotten into some situations that were questionable as to which way to go, and I think you handled those very, very well through the last two years.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Dick, thank you.
Okay, Christie Joy has now been elected to serve as Vice Chairperson of the Planning Commission for a two-year term.
At this time, um, I think, um, David Carey, um, Director of the Planning Department, was gonna come forward.
Sorry, I got pulled into a conversation in the back. Uh, I just wanna take the, take a moment to thank Tracy Edgerton for your two years of service as Chair, you did an excellent job, and I thank our new, uh, people being both nominated and, uh, approved to do the work as well, so, um, very happy with our membership, and I'm just happy, uh, that we're able to do this work, and we do it efficiently, and I have all the confidence in the world with Cindy and Christie to do the work as well moving forward, so, thank you very much, Tracy.
Thank you.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Shelley to read all consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled at a separate public hearing under Section Three of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Shelley, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, I wanna please note that, um, Agenda Items one point one A, City Comprehensive Plan Amendment two three zero zero eight, Item one point one B, Annexation two three zero zero seven, Item one point one C, Change of Zone two three zero five six, and Item one point two, Change of Zone two three zero five five, are being removed from the consent agenda and scheduled for public hearing today. First item on the consent agenda is Item one point three, Street and Alley Vacation twenty-three zero zero six, to vacate the unused remnant of County Right-Away on property generally located at West Vine Street east of Northwest Forty-eighth, Fortieth Street. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this item?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting this site to be disclosed?
Also, no.
If there is anyone wishing to speak on this consent agenda item, please stand and state that item.
Move forward and entertain a motion?
I would move that we approve the consent agenda, Campbell?
Second, Edens.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Approved, eight to zero.
We will now proceed to public hearings. Prior to staff making a brief presentation, each staff person should state their name, agency, and address. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The clerk will use a light system to help aid your timing for your testimony. The lights will appear on the monitors that are provided. The green light indicates the start time for your testimony, the yellow light represents that there is one minute remaining. The red light indicates that your five minutes has expired, and the clerk will indicate that your time is up. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as part of the record, please provide them to the clerk. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Shelley, please call the first public hearing item.
Yes, and I will please note that Commissioner Ball has declared a conflict of interest in Item four point one, which is on public hearing, text amendment two three zero zero one zero, and therefore will recuse himself from voting on that item. First items are the three items that were on the consent agenda. Um, Item one point one A, City Comprehensive Plan Amendment two three zero zero eight, Item one point one B, Annexation two three zero zero seven, Item one point one C, Change of Zone two three zero five six, and Item one point two, Change of Zone two three zero five five, are being removed from the consent agenda and scheduled for public hearing today. First item on the consent agenda is Item one point three, Street and Alley Vacation twenty-three zero zero six, to vacate the unused remnant of County Right-Away on property generally located at West Vine Street east of Northwest Forty-eighth, Fortieth Street. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this item?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting this sites to be disclosed?
No.
I'm George Wesselhoff, Planning Department, five-five-five South Tenth Street. Um, I'll briefly review the Comprehensive Plan Amendment first, followed by the Annexation and Change of Zone applications. Uh, generally, we're located to the northwest of O Street and One Hundred and Twelfth intersection. northwest of One Hundred and Twelfth and O Street. The Annexation area is along the west side of the property. Um, the application is to add approximately seventeen point six acres to the commercial Uh, the related change of zone areas include, um, an AG to R four, Change of Zone, which use designation area with a corresponding reduction in the urban residential area. corresponds to the same area as the Annexation, and then also a smaller R three to R four The existing commercial area, uh, which is in the red here, um, that designation comprises area. Uh, again, this whole area would to, would be to allow for single-family attached residential. around thirty-one acres. The total development property size, um, is seventy-eight point eight-four acres. And so, um, access for the first phase of the development, where's this exhibit here? The purpose of the request is to allow a more effective use of the site by enlarging the commercial area, which was previously identified. So, access for the first phase of development would be through multiple connections to Um, the expanded commercial will have a buffer along the west side of the property, uh, that the north and west, uh, which would extend through the existing Dominion at Stevens will consist of single-family attached residential. Creek development. Previously, uh, the City Council in February of this year had amended the Comprehensive Uh, there will be no new access to O Street, and, um, there will be two new access points Plan, uh, for this red area of commercial, and that took into account the presence of to North One Hundred and Twelfth Street, but those would occur at the time of the Phase existing pipelines, uh, pipeline planning areas along O Street and One Hundred and Two of the project, which is not proposed at this time. Twelfth. And so, uh, previously, as the City Council approved the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, they also approved prior Annexation and Change of Zone applications in February of this year, uh, which included at that time fourteen point six-eight acres located at the, at the north end of the property, and, um, that Change of Zone was from AG Agricultural to R three residential. The, there was an Annexation agreement associated with the Annexation at that time, and that requires that the street improvements, um, for North Hundred, North One Hundred and Twelfth and O Street, uh, will be done in conjunction with the second phase of development. Um, there's, again, no new access proposed to North One Hundred and Twelfth, and no commercial zoning is proposed at this time with this phase of the development. Uh, Lincoln Transportation and Utilities Department recently reviewed the current applications, and, um, they will require a traffic study for the commercial uses, but that will occur at the time of the commercial change of zone in the future. And with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Dick?
Uh, George, would you pull up, um, the previous map that showed what's being, um, requested for zoning change?
Sure.
Um, the piece right above O Street, I assume that is being left blank, uh, right in, in there for the pipeline setback?
Um, i- in part, and then I think, um, we're anticipating, we don't know for sure, but we're anticipating, uh, like what happened to the west, where the state acquired, um, property for future O Street widening.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
There's money from the applicant.
Good afternoon, Members of the Planning Commission, Danae Kalkowski, eleven-twenty-eight Lincoln Mall, Suite one oh five, here on behalf of the owners of the property, um, Fund Fifty-One and White Holdings. Doesn't seem like it was, we were here that long ago, back in February or early, earlier this year. Um, I think the applications that you have before you today are really kind of just additional refinements as they continue to look at the property and talk to users about it. Um, I think the, the first thing to talk about maybe is that change of zone along the west side. Um, they'd like to do some attached single-family, as, um, George mentioned. Uh, that could be done under an R three special permit, but since we were moving forward with just a straight preliminary plat, we really need that R four zone in order to be able to do the attached single-family, and so that's why we're making the request. We're actually doing it a little ahead of probably when they actually need to, just because we wanna get those neighbors to the west on notice that this will be attached to single-family, or could be town home type, uh, uses versus just unattached single-family, which is pretty consistent with what the use is shown on the west side. So, uh, we wanna get that in place so there's no questions, you know, down in the future. Um, then that obviously will provide a buffer between single-family areas and the commercial. Um, I think just moving that line, you can see on the map, we had, we had done the Comp Plan Amendment really on, toward the north to follow that pipeline planning area that we're dealing with, both along O Street and along One Hundred and Twelfth. And so, as they started talking to users of interest, there's, because of the street network, it seemed to make sense to go ahead and ask for an expansion of that commercial area to allow us a little bit of diff, different flexibility to market and to use that property. I think that's still in conformance with the Comp Plan, uh, to show that. As George mentioned, we aren't asking for the zoning of that at this time, we will be doing that in the future. We will come in with a traffic study, uh, when we know, uh, more specifically what those uses will be, and then we'll have to address improvements to both the intersection of, at O Street, and then the intersections on One Hundred and Twelfth Street at the time we come in with the zoning and, and the traffic study. And that's, that is spelled out in our Annexation Agreement, that, that would be Phase Two of the project, and we're required to, um, address those improvements when we come in with Phase Two. At this stage, I can tell you they are visiting with some folks about some contractor services out in this area, that's a use that people are looking for, additional sites to be able to do that, um, but we don't have anything nailed down yet, so we're not quite ready to, to put specific uses on there and do the traffic study at this point in time. North One Hundred and Twelfth Street is an arterial street roadway, uh, so, you know, it'd be eligible for, for, um, impact fee reimbursement and those sorts of things in the future when we're ready, but it's intended to be a major, you know, major roadway for the community. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for today? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we will ask for testimony in support of this application. Is there any testimony, um, people who take a neutral position on this application? And then, um, testimony in opposition?
Dan Davenport, uh, representing the Davenport and Wettenkamp family. We have the farm-
Your address real quick, please?
It's, uh, six oh two, North One Hundred and Twelfth.
Thank you.
Uh, we have that farm just on the east side of One Hundred and Twelfth Street, and we have a lot of concerns about, uh, not only, you know, the development of this with the commercial and the traffic and things, but the impact it's gonna have on the farm and the actual Stevens Creek along, uh, you know, as you see on the map, let me put this on there, but-
It just takes us- Yep, there you go.
Okay, this area along here is our farm. If they widen One Hundred and Twelfth, the pipeline that they put in, uh, which has been referred to a couple of times, is just along this west side of One Hundred and Twelfth. When they look at widening that road, there's only one direction it can go, that's to the east side, the way I see it, because I'm guessing we're not gonna move that pipeline to put that road on the developmental side. They're gonna move that road over here to the east side. What impacts that gonna have on our houses along that road? From the information that I've seen, the easement for those roads will be within feet of the front door of the houses. So that's a, obviously, a major concern that we have. You know, the front yards of those houses will be, you know, drastically impacted. We already have the sewer line that runs this catty corner from one end of our, of our property to the other. We don't have any choice on that. It will impact that land forever. You can look at any of those satellite images that we just put up there, and you can tell where that sewer line goes through, even though they tell you, when they're putting those lines in, that it's not going to impact in the future. It will. You guys know you've had, you know, cable lines or whatever run through your yards. You can see it for years. So imagine digging a thirty-foot hole that's a hundred foot wide, you're going to have that impact for years, that farmland will be impacted forever. They're not gonna fix it. We've already been approached about additional sewer lines coming in and attaching on to what is already there. Okay, so we have all kinds of concerns about just the sewer line and the impact it's gonna have on our property, so other people and other people around this developing that land, just because our land is farther downhill, that's the way it is. We've got major concerns about water runoff. Over here, they already have a holding, uh, pond that they say is supposed to hold the water, and the, the edge of the pond is higher than the ground, the water doesn't even run into the pond. It's not being regulated, that water just runs right down through the field. We've had discussions with the State Department of Transportation because the drainage ditch cannot hold the water already coming down off this hill. This area over here, they took all the terraces out years ago, before they started to this development, and that forced all that water into one place. And when this ditch down here can't hold the water, it runs north. When they were building that sewer line, if any of you remember, we had a four-inch rain in one night, four inches, and it blew out that sewer pipe, and they had, they had a terrible mess that they had to recover from down in, in the, you know, in the plant, when all that mud and water and debris filled that sewer line, because this ditch couldn't hold it. They are planning on widening O Street at some time, and that's even gonna take out more of this drainage area along here that goes down into Stevens Creek. So we have a lot of concerns along there, you know? We have no buffer. We're putting these houses and things in to have a buffer between all these houses to the residential. Our buffer will be a road that goes within feet of the front door of our house, that will be our buffer. So I don't know how we can change that or, you know, look at that for future use of that property, but, you know, it has major impacts on, on our farm and, and the way we live. You know, they're building all these right across the street, and then they're gonna make the road on our property. So, that's my concerns. I guess I don't have many, a lot of questions, you guys have questions for me, I don't know.
There's a question on here.
Um, am I correct that the orange on your property is the only build-able area?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the only thing that the NRD hasn't con- condemned or taken into the flood way or flood plain.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Yeah, they did that several years ago.
How many, how many homes are along One Hundred and Twelfth?
Uh, right now, there's five.
Okay.
On that. Uh, right here that's impacted by this half mile is three. The other two are farther north, uh, up here. But for those, those three homes, it'll be a major impact.
Is it a foregone conclusion that the road will have to be moved to the east, or is that just your?
Uh, from the plans that I've seen, uh, it does try to travel down the center of that road, but what I've been told, uh, even before, we're getting additional commercial space up here, that that road will be three lanes wide, one north, one south, and a turning lane. Well, the space needed for that isn't there. I mean, it's, it's there in our front yard.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Additional testimony in opposition?
It will. You guys know you've had, you know, cable lines or whatever run through your yards. You can see it for years. So imagine digging a 30-foot hole that's 100-foot wide. You're going to have that impact for years. That farmland will be impacted forever. They're not gonna fix it. We've already been approached about additional sewer lines coming in and attaching on to what is already there. So we have all kinds of concerns about just the sewer line and the impact it's gonna have on our property, so other people and other people around this developing that land, just because our land is farther downhill. That's the way it is. We've got major concerns about water runoff. Over here, they already have a holding pond that they say is supposed to hold the water, and the, the edge of the pond is higher than the ground. The water doesn't even run into the pond. It's not being regulated. That water just runs right down through the field. We've had discussions with the State Department of Transportation, because the drainage ditch cannot hold the water already coming down off this hill. This area over here, they took all the terraces out years ago, before they started to this development, and that forced all that water into one place. And when this ditch down here can't hold the water, it runs north. When they were building that sewer line, if any of you remember, we had a four-inch rain in one night, four inches. And it blew out that sewer pipe, and they had, they had a terrible mess that they had to recover from down in the, you know, in the plant, when all that mud and water and debris filled that sewer line. Because this ditch couldn't hold it. They are planning on widening O Street at some time, and that's even gonna take out more of this drainage area along here that goes down into Stevens Creek. So we have a lot of concerns along there. We have no buffer. They're putting these houses and things in to have a buffer between all these houses to the residential. Our buffer will be a road that goes within feet of the front door of our house. That will be our buffer. So I don't know how we can change that or, you know, look at that for future use of that property, but, you know, it has major impacts on, on our farm and the way we live. You know, they're building all these right across the street, and then they're gonna make the road on our property. So, that's my concerns. I guess I don't have many, a lot of questions. You guys have questions for me? I don't know.
There's a question on here.
Am I correct that the orange on your property is the only build-able area?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's the only thing that the NRD hasn't condemned or taken into the floodway or floodplain.
Thank you.
Yeah, they did that several years ago.
How many, how many homes are along 112th?
Right now, there's five on that. Right here that's impacted by this half-mile is three. The other two are farther north, up here. But for those, those three homes, it'll be a major impact.
Is it a foregone conclusion that the road will have to be moved to the east? Or is that just your-
From the plans that I've seen, it does try to travel down the center of that road. But what I've been told, even before, we're getting additional commercial space up here, that that road will be three lanes wide, one north, one south, and a turning lane. Well, the space needed for that isn't there. I mean, it's, it's there in our front yard.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Additional testimony in opposition? Okay, we'll move on with staff questions.
George, you mentioned that, the widening of 112th. At this stage, how much conversation has there been about when that would happen? How that, what that would look like, in taking into account what we've talked about here?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of any preliminary plans that delineate right-of-way acquisition. I mean, the, the traffic study would be part of the puzzle, if you will, because it would correlate to necessary improvements such as turn lane improvements. And then, L T U would look at what right-of-way is needed for that. I might ask Bob Simmering with L T U to, to come up and generally speak on how they would look at that further.
Sure.
Bob Simmering, Lincoln Transportation Utilities, 555 South 10th.
Just to clarify what George was addressing with regard to the right-of-way and what the process is for looking at the widening of 112th.
Typically, an arterial street will have 120 feet of right-of-way, 60 feet on each side of center line. That's not an always case. However, not knowing exactly where that pipeline is standing here before you today and what the width of that street would be, I could not say that we're gonna push it to the east. In any case, if there is a right-of-way acquisition, that property is appraised, land value, building value, damages, and there is compensation to the owners for any of those items that would happen to fall into the process.
And really, those, those, those types of, that process wouldn't necessarily, that would come into play when we're changing something from agricultural to R3 to R4, what, or, or commercial. I mean, all of those things would come into play. It doesn't really matter the specific type of zoning that's being considered for, for this area. Am I correct?
Well, what would happen is the street would be designed based on the traffic that would be generated there, and that would, you know, this situation is quite unique in that there's so much floodplain north that the, the property beyond this is not going to probably generate much traffic. And so, it may be a different design than the four lanes or the three lanes that would be generated by that traffic study.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Bob or George? Okay.
Thank you.
Applicant rebuttal.
Maybe just a couple comments. North 112th Street's going to have to be improved, whether this is commercial or residential, to at least, you know, a minimum standard for the arterial street network, which would largely, usually be the three-lane, like two lanes with the center turn lane. And, and so, just by approval of the project, the last time we were in, basically, this area is within our future growth area. It's an area that's identified for future growth, as is some of the property to the east, right? So we're just continuing a growth pattern in accordance with the comprehensive plan. I think what we're doing today, we already had commercial all the way along 112th Street, so we are adding a little bit. But I think Public Works did not require the traffic study at this time, because it's gonna be most appropriate once we have the specific uses, you know, identified. The location of the gas line on the west side, it's not right up against the right-of-way. So I believe there's opportunity on our side to dedicate our portion of the right-of-way. So I don't, I don't believe there's gonna need to be an offset of the street just because we can't dedicate our right-of-way. But that, again, would be determined at the time of design and when we're looking at that, once we have a traffic study with all of the numbers in front. So unfortunately, some of this is just associated with growing pains when we're coming out and we're bringing an urban area adjacent to an area that's, you know, being utilized today as ag. And we have to improve our arterial streets, and we have to build sewer lines, and we have to build these things through the ag ground in order to serve the area that's gonna be urbanizing. And so, I think that was part of already what was approved back in early this year, and this is really just a further refinement of it today. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
There was some, some discussion with regard to water runoff and holding pond and, and the drainage ditch in that area being a little, not able to hold the water during significant rainfall. Do you have any-
But that would've been with the Dominion property to the west, so that really doesn't have anything to do with ours. Obviously, when we come in, we have to follow the city's standards with respect to stormwater detention, water quality, water runoff, you know, development within the floodplain. All of those regulations will be followed. And I think we already started with some of that, a master grading and drainage plan that we had approved with the preliminary plat that is already approved out there for our site.
Questions for today?
Great, thank you.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Edens.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I would move that we approve Comprehensive Plan Amendment 23008.
Second, Edens.
My reasoning on that is that we've already approved that project, and this one is not that great of an addition to it. In a, in, in looking at, and if they're able to get the, the, go up to the pipeline on the, on the west side and then do it on the east side for their portion of it needed, that property that's developable on the east is very minimal. And probably the highest and best use for that property may be apartments or something like that, because I don't see residential housing fitting that, that small of a piece of ground very easily. So I will be supporting all three of the items before us.
I also will be supporting all three. I do respect the rights of the current landowners and homeowners in that area. This has been a good forum for them to talk about some of the things happening in the area, so we can continue to investigate and look at that. And as the traffic study moves forward in the next however many years, we can keep that on record and acknowledge that. I do believe that if we follow our city standards and look at that street widening based on L T U's requirements, that it will be a good growth plan with the comp plan.
I will support the motion. I think that the change of zone, in particular, from R3 to R4, and as detailed by the developer, certainly makes sense as an additional buffer to the properties that are on the east side. You know, looking at the map and kind of going from your single-family to the concept of having those properties that are available for R4 make a lot of sense, especially then if you're having commercial on the east side of that. And I will certainly support that going forward.
Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Approved, eight to zero.
I also will move approval of Annexation 23007.
Second, Edens.
Ball?
Go ahead.
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Approved, eight to zero.
And I also move Change of Zone 23056.
Second, Edens.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Approved, eight to zero.
We're ready for 1.2 now.
Okay, well, we'll now move to item 1.2, Change of Zone 23055, from R6 Residential District to B3 Commercial District, on property generally located at 4718 Cooper Avenue. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this application?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
No.
Ben Callahan with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street, 68508. This is a request for a change of zone for a single property currently zoned R6 and requesting to be changed to B3. And the property here, it's along, so it's at 4718 Cooper Avenue. This was requested by the applicant to change to B3 for the use of an office on the main floor and then would have a residential unit in the basement. Currently, the site is surrounded on the east, directly east would be Union College along 48th. And so, the whole east side and south of the property are all zoned B3. And then to the west is a parking lot. It's zoned R6, but has a special permit for a parking lot, and that's associated with the business owner on the east side, so it's not associated with them. Looking at the property, there's currently a single-family home that was built in the 1960s and then is being used as an office for a construction company, and then the residential unit exists in the basement. Looking at this, planning-wise, there's, the comprehensive plan calls for block faces to try and have the same type of zoning. And that was one of the main reasons for planning support in this, in that it's basically surrounded on three sides without a residential dwelling. And the whole block face on the south side is already zoned B3. There's an automotive shop, and then personal services and retail along 48th. So compatibility-wise, we thought it also met, would kind of finish out Cooper Avenue here with B3, and then keep the parking lot under the special permit that it's, has today. I'd relatively agree, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ben? We'll see you back in a few minutes. Testimony from the applicant.
Hi, my name is Katie Reese, 5417 South 62nd Street. The property, 4718 Cooper Avenue, is owned by my husband and I, our LLC. And we bought it 20 years ago with the intention of having the Reese Construction Office only in the first and second floor of that building. The basement was kind of a bonus when we bought it, because it was already established as an apartment. It wasn't conforming. There were two windows that weren't egressed. We went ahead and put those in, and so now it's a conforming basement apartment. The, like Ben said, all around us is our businesses. And I, I guess, if I reflected back, perhaps we should've looked into this 20 years ago, changing the zone. But at that time, we were housing Reese Construction Office in our third-stall garage. Like many small businesses, when you start up, it's in your home. And upon the arrival of number four child, very hormonal I was, and I needed to get rid of the office, get rid of the people out of my house and have my house, our house, excuse me, be our house. So this property came available, we purchased it, set up an LLC. There's, we have vans for our employees, our construction employees, but they're not parked there. They take them home. So on evenings and weekends, there's, there was no, I guess, extra traffic, extra, you know, throughout the day. Wednesday morning is probably the busiest, because there's a project meeting, all the employees show up, all the construction guys. And then the vans leave and go off to their jobs. So I, we'd really like to have the zoning changed. Are there any questions?
Why now?
Pardon me?
Why now?
Why now? Well, I guess it was a couple months ago. So we office, it's just an office. We have our shop on 48th Street, which is just north, or, excuse me, southeast of where our property is. 3911 South 48th is where our shop is. So no construction takes place at the residence we're talking about for zone changing. A couple months ago, the, they were doing property evaluations, and so, the, I'm not sure if you call them inspectors or what, showed up at the door of the office and came in, and our office manager was working at her desk, and he thought it was a residence, of course, I mean, it's zoned for residents. And he looked at her, and he said, "You're in office?" He said, "You can't office, it's not zoned that way." So ding, the light bulb went on, and we thought, okay, well, we better get up to speed with the city and with zoning, and, and then apply for this. And that has been incredibly helpful.
So nothing has changed with your business? I mean, you're really operating the business the same way you have it?
Okay, so two employees, well, I guess Herb, he comes and goes. So three people office there. The shop over on 48th Street, that's where if the guys are building cabinets or doing all sorts of construction work off-site of the jobs, they will do that there. So, yeah, the, I, I know there's been some concerns brought up.
And, and so, in a couple of the letters we received, they, there was some reference to an alley. That's the alley to the, I'm-
This, oh.
To the west of the east.
Does this show up?
Yeah, to the east of the direction.
Alley on the east, parking lots on the west, sorry.
So that's-
Give it a minute to come up.
There you go.
Okay, so here's Cooper Avenue. This is the alleyway right here.
Okay.
So you can see, this patch right here, we poured concrete for parking. And the alley, obviously, is rocked. And the, one person was complaining, or stated that there's some damage done due to big vehicles going in there. Well, I don't believe it's our vans. Our vans pull in and then park on the, on the concrete pads if they're gonna just run into the office. There are dumpsters, big dumpsters, associated with the backs of some of these surrounding properties. And so, the large dump truck that can dump those dumpsters has to back up from Cooper. They back up from here and back up all the way through. So that was, I think, this property owner was complaining that there was some destruction. Well, I, I think it's probably the garbage trucks that, you know, other than getting rid of the dumpsters, I don't know what you do to address that.
So when you say vans, you mean larger passenger vans?
What, size vans?
Two-fifty, because of three cars.
Oh, larger passenger vans, yeah.
Yeah. And it just houses their equipment, so it's not, and we don't have any, like, if we're getting a shipment of doors or lumber or something, well, they go over to our shop, which was, which is right here. And you can see, there's access all the way through here, because we poured concrete all the way through. So that's where all the, you know, materials would go if they're needing them over at the shop.
On the Wednesday mornings, when you have your meeting of all the employees, do all of the vans fit in that concrete parking space?
No, so a lot of the guys will just pull their vans over here at the shop and park along there. And then a few of them, you know, I mean, if they come early enough, they might just pull in there. And, you know, I don't know, the meeting- just pull in there, and, you know, I don't know, the meetings might, maybe at the most, hour and a half, two hours tops, but mostly hour meeting, and then, you know, if some of them have to stay because they're gonna be making phone calls to suppliers or subs or homeowners, then they might hang around, do a little paperwork before they head off to their jobs. Weekends and evenings, that, nobody's there. Our tenant down below, right here, there's a tat, two-stall attached garage, and so the tenant that is below gets the first stall. The second stall is just kind of a, I don't know, overflow for tools and things. Most everything is over at the shop on, off of 48th Street.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Is there testimony in support of the application? Need testimony taking a neutral position, and then testimony in opposition? Okay, any other staff questions? And applicant rebuttal?
I would move that we cause a public hearing.
Second, Edens. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
And I would move that we approve change of zone 23055.
Second, Edens. Ball? Okay. Discussion, please.
Yeah, I just want to add some comments. I know their company, I know the size of vans that they run, their vans are not doing any damage to that alley. They're not heavy enough to do any damage to that alley. And what they've done in concreting the areas for parking and so on, I think they've more an offset, and I would agree with them, it's probably garbage trucks that are doing, doing the damage. We've had that problem out in Village Gardens, and finally mandated that they go to all one care, one garbage company so that, so that we could have some contact, a contract, contact over that garbage company going, because they were ruining our alleys. And so I'm going to be very much in support of this motion.
I agree, I think that as, as demonstrated by the Planning Department's review of this, the fact that there's B3 on both sides of Cooper Avenue, both to the west as well as directly across the street, it really kind of rounds out that block face, with the exception of the parking lot, which is really a special permit issue in R6. It makes a lot of sense, it's the way this property has been used for 20 years, and I, I think that there's no reason to think that this isn't an appropriate use for this location. I will support it. All right, Shelley. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Approved H to zero. Next item for public hearing is item 4.1, text amendment 23010, amending Article 2, definitions to add definition for distillery, micro-distillery and spirits. Article 4, Section 4.005, permitted conditional uses to add micro-distillery, and Article 13, special permit to add farm winery, social hall in the ag agricultural district. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this application?
Yes.
Yes.
So Steve, and his last name escapes me, came to the mayor's roundtable and kind of updated on this, on that text amendment that was with the August meeting, and then for the August meeting for the Clinton Neighborhood Organization, we also discussed this because it was a text amendment that was brought up at the mayor's roundtable.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
Good afternoon, Tom Chaka, Planning Staff. So this text amendment is to the Lancaster County zoning regulations to amend three sections. Article 2, definitions, Article 4.05, permitted conditional use for, in AG zoning, and 4.07 for permitted special uses. The text amendment is to amend farm wineries to allow farm wineries to have micro-distilleries. Micro-distilleries would be allowed to produce spirits, is the term the state uses, which would include whiskey, vodka, rum, brandy, et cetera. The micro-distillery would have to be on the same site as a farm winery and be accessory to the farm winery. We still want the farm winery to be the main use. This text amendment for micro-distillery is kind of similar to what we did a couple of years ago to add micro breweries to farm wineries. The farm winery, the micro-distillery would be allowed to produce up to 12,500 gallons per year. A lot of the other conditions are the same as what's allowed for the wine and the beer sales, where they can sell it onsite, offsite, wholesale, et cetera. The other probably bigger change is to allow, allow what we're calling farm winery social hall. Again, it'd be a, a lot of these farm wineries want to have events, and currently they're supposed to be kind of small events, probably less than 100 people. Every now and then, I know that they have larger events, maybe, not sure in the county, they might have to get a special event license from the county board, but this would allow, with this social hall, would allow them to, to hold larger events, like wedding receptions or graduations, that type of thing. Again, it would have to be on the same site as a farm winery. It would allow what we're classifying as primary event space and secondary event space. The primary event space would be for the large gatherings, which could have a maximum of 400 persons and be allowed three days per week. The secondary would be for smaller events, up to 100 persons, which would have no limit on the days per week. If you kind of look, kind of compare it to maybe like a convention center where you have large rooms or you can have smaller rooms, this is kind of the same idea. It could either be in one large building where you might have multiple rooms, or they could be separate buildings. Some of the wineries already have separate spaces for smaller events. Some of the other conditions, no amplified outside music except for during wedding ceremony. The site would have to be on a paved road. Parking at a ratio of one, one space per 100 square feet of the building. Lighting, outdoor lighting, we took this from City of Lincoln Design Standards, limiting how bright of a light they could be and light trespass at the property line. And then we put in on the end that items A, C and E, which is, A is that social hall has to be in a farm winery, C is the limit of persons, and E is that it has to be on a paved road, and we added that those would not be allowed to be waived, those conditions. I guess I'd reiterate, working on several of these other ones in the county, and most of these conditions are similar to what we had put on the other wine, or event venues in the county that have previously been approved. And being on a paved road has always seemed to be a, a big issue, trying to keep dust down and just don't want people, maybe you've had one drink too many to be out driving on gravel roads, so. With that, I'll take any questions.
I guess not today, maybe after testimony.
Okay.
All right, testimony from the applicant.
Good afternoon, my name is Anne Post, I'm an attorney with Rembutt-Ludke Law Firm, and I'm here today on behalf of Ballard Family LLC. The applicant for this text amendment that is affiliated with James Arthur Vineyards, James Arthur Vineyards, which is here in Lancaster County. They are a winery that has been in Lancaster County for, I believe, I believe 30 years, but Mr. Ballard is here, so he can correct me if I, if I overstated that. They're the, one of the largest wineries in Lancaster County. And so it's, as, as the winery continues to grow and continues to thrive, it was the vision of the Ballard family to expand the services and expand the offerings of the winery. And to that extent, there was the idea to expand into distilling spirits, having that offering for people who want to come enjoy the vineyard, enjoy the country views, but maybe don't enjoy wine, don't enjoy Nebraska wine, so they can come enjoy the facilities and, and enjoy Lancaster County. More than that, having a social hall or an event venue is a business model that has proved very successful in other counties and that James Arthur was, James Arthur Winery was hoping to bring to Lancaster County. And so with that, I also want to thank the Planning Staff for working with us to craft a language that would allow that but also address concerns of Lancaster County. As you noticed, the primary and secondary event space, it got a little technical, as you can tell that was heavily discussed language. The main concern that, as was alluded to, hosting a certain size of event is an accessory use to, would be an allowed accessory use to a vineyard or a farm winery. You know, for example, if you think of a restaurant that you can have, maybe there's a party room and a birthday party, a farm winery will have, will have acoustic music maybe on Friday night, which is a little bit of a larger gathering but well within the limit of an accessory use. So with a social hall, an event venue, we know that that is not, you're no longer in the realm of accessory use, but the question was, where is the limit? Where is the limit between making sure that once we allow a social hall, as an accessory use, we're not limiting those previously allowed accessory uses? So I want to thank the Planning Staff for working with us to find the line there, to find a way to continue the successful business, not impede the successful business, but also to allow that expansion, expansion into a social hall. And so with that, we're really excited about the opportunity presented by this. The Ballards are with me here today to answer, also answer any questions, but are here to, because we're very excited about the opportunity this presents, and we anticipate being in front of you with a special permit for that social hall use as soon as we can be. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Anne, the, the main hall would hold up to 400 people. If somebody wanted to have a 600-person event, could they use the accessory areas also?
So first, that's something that the design is going to be a part of a special permit for the social hall. I think my, the way that it is currently designed is that that accessory area is going to be a, more or less removable wall, so that when we want to have a smaller event space, we can wall it off. So the facility that we're planning right now is going to be a 300-person facility.
Got it, thank you.
But that, that kind of leads to my question, which is, you know, this is a text amendment, but it's also being introduced with a specific use in mind, and so I was wondering a little bit about the James Arthur neighbors and how, what the thought is or how much this has been shared with the neighbors and the potential for this and, and what that feedback has been, you know, hopefully positive, but whether there's been any concerns along the way as that's been discussed, because since it's a text amendment, I assume that it wasn't your normal chain of, you know, informing folks.
Yeah, so first, I will say that when we get to this, when we get to a special permit, I think we submitted our application about an hour before, before this meeting, but, so with that special permit, there is that extra step for the social hall, which means all the neighbors will be notified and they'll have their chance for public hearing on, for this particular location.
Got it.
I know that this amendment went out to a very large group, I did get a couple calls on, from people in southwest, or yeah, southeast Lancaster County, calling me about this text amendment, you know, we, we sat down with pen and paper to try and figure out, you know, how this, why they might have got that, but here nor there. Anyway, so James Arthur owns a significant, their operation owns a significant amount of the property around, around this location, which means that most neighbors are a fair distance away, and the closest neighbor is actually the owners, the family that lives there on a separate parcel, but closest proximity. That's also where this location is, where they do have the advantage of being on a paved road, and I know that was very important to control the traffic and noise and dust. So we, Jim, the family has an open line of communication with the neighbors that we, my understanding is that, well, I know they've always had a great relationship, I don't know to what extent we've had communication about this specific project yet.
Super, that's very helpful.
Thank you.
Some questions for you?
Thank you.
Do we have testimony in support of this application? Need neutral or, oh, there is.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Jim Ballard, owner of James Arthur Vineyards, 1503 West Reiman Road, and I'm basically here to see if you had any other questions about the facility. We've been in operation for, the winery itself, for 26 years, we've been growing great for 30 years, and to answer your, your question, Tracy, that we are pretty much the neighbors in that area, but we've, we've been doing smaller events and, and just different things at the winery for 26 years, and I've never had any problems with our neighbors, and we've been, we've tried to be good stewards of the land and of our, of our relationship with the neighbors as well. So this is just the next step to bring other family members in and to grow the business and to, to continue doing what we do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, Rick?
Will you maintain your outdoor amphitheater area?
The, right now, where we do our live music, yes, and that, and the small, one of the smaller accessories is we have a small party room right now that holds up to 50 people, and when we do the music outdoors, we'll continue probably to do that around the winery. We've always been cognizant of our neighbors in terms of that aspect of it as well, we stop everything at 9:00 PM at night on Saturdays, and we do our music occasionally on Fridays. That is the same plan here with this special events facility, we will try to, right now, during the week, we will do no events past 9:00 PM on Saturdays, Fridays, nothing past 11:00, and most of that's going to be inside the facility, as it is with most special events facilities right now, we don't have any plans to do any music or anything outside of that specific facility. You know, there'll be wedding receptions hopefully, or weddings and then the wedding reception, but all that'll happen earlier in the day likely, so. But yeah, we'll continue to do probably what we do on a regular basis.
Yeah, Chrissy?
I can hear their music from my home, and I have never heard anybody complain. I think you do a great job.
Thank you.
Of controlling the environment, and we, we've all enjoyed it, you know, and so I think they're steward, good stewards of the area, and so this is a fun text amendment to see on the floor.
In fact, sometimes we have some of our neighbors go out on their porch and listen to our music from their, from their homes.
Watch fireworks.
Depending on which way the wind's blowing, so.
Exactly, which way the wind's blowing.
Any else?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, does anybody have any staff questions? I have one staff question. Okay. And it actually is related to Dick's question that he asked earlier with regard to the text amendment, because again, this text amendment isn't technically about this particular property, so I am curious as to Planning's interpretation of that primary and secondary space and how that would work in the broader context of the text amendment versus this property.
Yeah. So the primary is 400 persons, two secondary, 100 apiece, so technically you could have one event and have 600 people and use all those event spaces. The main primary building, some of that is going to be also regulated by, by the fire marshal on what their capacity could be built in there, but yeah, they're, they probably could do that.
Okay.
Cindy?
Yes, Dick.
Just technicality, but I don't think you, I don't think there is anybody, but I don't think you ask for neutral or negative testimony. don't think you ask for neutral or negative testimony.
Um, you're, you're right. I did not. Is there, so are there any other staff questions? We may come back up if there is testimony, but, sorry, I skipped. Do we have any testimony that is in a neutral or in opposition to this? All right. Thank you, Dick. Since they were all sitting together, I thought it would create for a really interesting Thanksgiving dinner if somebody decided to speak in opposition.
I thought we'd better be technically correct.
No, I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, applicant, do you have anything else to, great.
I would move that, go ahead, Cindy.
Oh, wait, we have another staff question.
Can I ask just another quick staff question? When we were deciding on the different gallons of spirits or other things in the past, and I just can't remember, what, can they ask for a waiver if they want more than that? Not that that's even an option, I don't know the sizes based on codes.
No, because the micro-distillery is under conditional use of the zoning code, so it's not a special permit, it's just an allowed use as long as they meet those conditions.
Okay.
The only way to change that would be to go back and do another text change.
It's in the definition of micro-distillery?
Yeah.
Perfect, okay, and that's why I was just trying to...
Yeah, we, we did, we went back and forth a little bit on the gallons, and they, the applicant had agreed, has agreed to this, so.
And I didn't know if you had other feedback or thoughts from other micro-distilleries or...
Nope.
I'm not.
As far as, nobody, as far as I know, nobody else has asked about it.
Okay, no worries, I just, I couldn't remember because we had discussed it under, when we talked about breweries, I thought I remembered that. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Dick?
Tom, would that also mean that if they're doing, let's say, a bourbon and they're doing a Scotch or a, or a rum, that for each one of them, they could have 12,500?
Nope.
It's total, it's total production?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dick, for...
No problems. I would move to close the public hearing.
Second, Edgerton. Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Rymenios?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
I would also move to approve text amendment two-three-zero-one-zero.
Second, Edgerton.
Obviously, they've run a great operation out there, and I know a text amendment is not just about James Arthur Vineyards. It, we're setting the parameters for anybody who wants to do this type of thing, but I think it's been well worked out between the planning department and the applicant, and should be applicable for others very easily.
Yeah, I agree. I think that it's an exciting opportunity for local businesses to consider how best to expand their operations. I think that it provides an opportunity for continued promoting economic growth, and I'm excited that we can play a role in that.
All right, thanks, Shelley. Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Rymenios?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero. At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on today's agenda may do so.
I would move we adjourn.
Second, Edens. Ball?
He's not here.
He does not come back again. Okay. Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Rymenios?
Yes.
We are adjourned.